It's great at the very beginning.
The very beginning, okay, right after a call to order and roll call?
Yes.
Okay.
And communications.
Okay.
Okay. Good afternoon, I'm Jeff Chamberlain Deputy City Manager and like to welcome everybody to the City of Kalamazoo's Committee of the Whole Meeting for Monday, February first, two thousand and twenty one. The meeting is being streamed live on the City of Kalamazoo's Facebook page and it's also being streamed live on the City of Kalamazoo's YouTube channel. You can listen to the meeting on Zoom by calling area code two six nine five five two six four two five and entering meeting ID number nine three three zero three eight one one eight five four when prompted. And you can also leave a public comment for tonight's committee of the whole meeting by calling area code two six nine two two six six five seven three. And with that, I'd like to turn it over to Kalamazoo Mayor David Anderson.
Thank you very much Deputy City Manager Jeff Chamberlain, appreciate it. So, welcome everyone to our first official new version of an extra work meeting called Committee of the Whole. So, we're doing that at five o'clock before our meetings. Happy to welcome everybody and call this Committee of the Whole Meeting to order for this auspicious month of February, Black History Month. Clerk Borla, will you please call the roll?
Commissioner Cunningham.
Here in the great city of Kalamazoo.
Commissioner Hess.
Here in Kalamazoo.
Commissioner Knott.
Here in Kalamazoo.
Commissioner Pradel.
Present in the City of Kalamazoo.
Commissioner Urban.
Here in Kalamazoo.
Vice Mayor Griffin.
Here in Kalamazoo.
Mayor Anderson.
Here in Kalamazoo. Thank you Clerk Borla. DCM Chamberlain, are there any communications?
No, there aren't, Your Honor.
Okay. So, am I turning it over to you now for public comment?
Yes, sir, we are doing with the Committee of the Whole Meetings, which is this is a new format for the City Commission. We do have a public comment period and it is here at the beginning of the meeting. We do have a few comments that have come in tonight and we'll go ahead and play those.
Good afternoon, my name is Dorothy Appleyard and I am a resident of the City of Kalamazoo. I want to begin by thanking you for adding the Committee of the Whole to the meeting schedule. It is a step forward, but a baby step where strides are needed. I've always been an ardent supporter of transparent inclusive government that fosters public engagement. I was predictably disturbed by an item that was on the consent agenda at the January nineteen Commission meeting. During the public comment portion of the meeting, several callers expressed concerns about environmental impacts related to constructing a seventy-seven car surface parking lot in an area that often floods. The Commission passed the item on the consent agenda, thus denying any conversation or debate on the topic. That is the opposite of being open, transparent, and inclusive. During his comments, the mayor made a point that affordable housing was mandated by Imagine Kalamazoo. And I don't question that, but I did some reading on the Imagine Kalamazoo site. And in the raw data survey, something like eighty-four percent of respondents were concerned about flooding and preservation of habitats, among other environmental concerns. This is not about being anti-affordable housing and please don't characterize it as such. But it is about genuine concern for the environment and the future of the city. We have to be we have to be intentional about planning for affordable housing in desirable places on suitable sites that won't result in either severe infrastructure issues or substandard housing.
Jeff Messer, City Resident. I would like to thank the Commission for finally establishing Public Committee of the Whole Meetings and replacement of the closed-to-the-public subcore meetings, which violated the spirit of the Michigan Open Meetings Act and deprived the public of information and discussion to which they are rightfully entitled. It is unfortunate that it took media attention this fall to finally motivate the Commission to make this change. Commissioner Jack Urban has been asking the Commission to establish Committee of the Whole Meetings since at least the first business meeting of this term on November eighteen, two thousand and nineteen. That is also the meeting where I asked the fifty-third City Commission to commit to greater transparency and opportunities for citizen participation in light of having a new mayor for the first time in twelve years. Even before that, many of you knew that those subcore meetings were highly questionable. In April, two thousand and seventeen, Wood TVA exposed similar subcore meetings that the Grand Rapids City Commission was holding. Anyone in the public who would want to watch that report can search on YouTube for the title, "Former Grand Rapids City Attorney Questions Secret Meetings." As a result of that ratings sweeps month investigation, Grand Rapids discontinued its subcore meetings over three years ago in September, two thousand and seventeen. I do appreciate that your new Committee of the Whole Meetings have a public comments period. I attended a few of Kalamazoo County's Committee of the Whole Meetings in about two thousand and fourteen. They didn't have a public comment period. I really appreciate additional opportunities to address the Commission outside of the main City Commission meeting. Thank you.
Hi, this is Casey Coker. I'm a resident of Kalamazoo, I live in the Stewart neighborhood. I'm calling to say that I'm very grateful and thank you for attending to the transparency and accountability related to City Manager Ritzma. I look forward to having a conversation or listening to your conversation and resolution and hopefully improved accountability and transparency this evening around the events of the end of two thousand and twenty. And hopefully, we can continue building a community that has accountability and transparency where we can work on trusting our leaders. So, I look forward to hearing what you all say tonight and I am optimistic that we can reach a accountable and transparent resolution. Thank you. Bye.
Mr. Mayor, that was the last public comment that we've received today.
Thank you so much, DCM Chamberlain. So, tonight we have a bit of a couple presentations related to some important topics that are coming up for us. And shall I turn it back over to you then, DCM Chamberlain, to get those started?
Yes, thank you, sir. So, tonight we wanted to present to the City Commission an overview of the utility rates for water and wastewater for the fiscal year two thousand and twenty one. As we discussed here in the past, the City of Kalamazoo runs a regional water and wastewater system that collects wastewater or sewage from not only the City of Kalamazoo, but a large part of Kalamazoo County and the industries in Kalamazoo County. And the City of Kalamazoo also operates a public water system that extends far beyond just the City of Kalamazoo. So, as we come every year with the rates, we want to also explain what goes into those rates. So, tonight, City of Kalamazoo's Director of Public Services, James Baker, will be talking about kind of the overall system of water and wastewater and then also talking about some of the major improvements that are coming here and that are planned for two thousand and twenty one for both water and wastewater systems. And then we also have Mr. Bart Foster with us tonight, who's our consultant regarding rates. And Mr. Foster will talk to us about kind of the process that goes into making rates, what we talked about last year and how that kind of plays into the rates for two thousand and twenty one. And then also just kind of the overall kind of factors that impact utility rates for our customers. We also know that, you know, this is a difficult time for a lot of people, especially because of COVID and the economy. And so Director Baker is also going to be discussing some of the efforts underway by the city and some of our other partners to provide assistance with these utilities. And then finally, we want to touch base and just tell you what the next steps are for adopting these. Because it is a relatively complicated topic, feel free to jump in. We'll be running the show in Mr. Baker or Mr. Foster. But if you do have a question, we would recommend that you go ahead and ask it at that time. And then that way, while we're still on that topic, we can try to address any questions that you have that maybe other people might be having something similar. So, with that, I'd like to turn it over to Public Services Director James Baker for our presentation.
Thank you Deputy City Manager Chamberlain. Will you be running the slideshow?
Yes.
Okay. I'll take this moment to thank you, Mayor, Your Honor, and members of the City Commission, City Manager Ritzma as well. You know, thank you for this opportunity to take this time to talk about the public utility systems as they are so very important in supporting everyday life and safety of our community members. So, as stated, we're just going to give an overview, just some of the general characteristics of the utility systems. We're going to be talking about some of the projects that we've got proposed and then also focusing on a rate discussion. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. So, starting off, here's a map of our water system. As you can see, the map covers a pretty much a large portion of the population center of Kalamazoo County. There are outside cities and areas that are not served. City of Portage, for example, has their own water system. However, City of Kalamazoo provides service to Portage customers that are north of I ninety-four. You also see some of the smaller out county cities and villages also have their own water systems, examples such as Galesburg Augusta Climax and School Craft, as well as Vicksburg have their own water systems. Next slide, please. We're going to discuss a little bit about what makes Kalamazoo's water system unique or what are some of the characteristics of it that may be different from some others. Size-wise, this is a large system in comparison to the state of Michigan and other systems. In terms of groundwater, we are the largest all-groundwater water supply. What this means for us is that generally, we operate on a decentralized model. We have many stations across the entire service area. Generally, we have more pipe in terms of smaller diameter pipes and there's a greater percentage of small diameter pipes. And the system is very integrated in terms of pipes and stations and towers. So, there's a lot of miles of main, you see about eight hundred and thirty miles of main, over six thousand hydrants. And the system does have a lot of aquifer capacity in terms of pumpage and raw station ability. We've got about forty-six million gallons of pumping capacity. Yet, we're sitting on abundant aquifers and we've got over a hundred and fifty million gallon of aquifer capacity. Next slide, please. This map in front of you now is a map of our wastewater system coverage area. It's a little bit different. It does include bigger area, mainly that City of Portage. We serve their treatment needs. So, all of the sewers in City of Portage flow north of Kalamazoo. We also see the out city and village areas. Most of those areas are captured with wastewater systems that then either pump or gravity flow their sewage to Kalamazoo for treatment. You see that in the north, we go all the way up to Berry and Prairieville Counties and Berry Townships and Berry County. We go all the way east to the Village of Augusta and Ross Township. We go south and touch portions of School Craft and Brady Township. And on the west side, we go west all the way to Village of Madawan in Van Buren County. Next slide, please. We also have some unique things going on at the wastewater treatment plant. Again, because of our very large service area covering majority of the population center of Kalamazoo County. It's a pretty large plant. It's a very advanced plant, Michigan's only activated carbon treatment plant. It's the only treatment plant in the nation to our knowledge that has an EPA exemption for pharmaceutical manufacturing. This is an opportunity that Kalamazoo has in supporting local manufacturing in the county with a large pharmaceutical manufacturer just south of us in Portage and our ability to support that industry. We're also over ninety-nine percent compliant, ninety-nine point nine percent compliant in terms of effluent quality and what we're able to discharge to the river. On average, we're cleaning up nearly twenty-seven million gallons per day as we collect and treat all that waste from all those communities. Next slide, please. Let me talk a little bit about some of the project areas that we look at for two thousand and twenty-one. Obviously, lead service line replacements and we'll get into more detailed discussion about that. Cast iron water main is something that we're focused on primarily in the City of Kalamazoo. Increasing elevated storage facilities, that means increasing the number of water towers that we have available to support the system across the entire system. We have many projects also focused on improving treatment performance at the treatment plants themselves. And then over on wastewater, we've got a lot of projects focused on odor control and then tertiary treatment. I'll talk about tertiary treatment real quick. That's just a process within the wastewater treatment plant. You know, we look at the processes in wastewater under different categories. We have preliminary treatment, primary treatment, secondary treatment. And then one of the final stages of treatment is known as tertiary treatment. Next slide, please. Focusing on lead service line replacements. We've really been focused on lead service line replacements with an annual goal of five hundred replacements per year since two thousand and seventeen. All these dots are show where we've been over the years. These dots are from two thousand and sixteen forward through today. We're currently working in the blue shaded area, which is Eastside, Kalamazoo and Eastwood and Kalamazoo Township. We're going to stay focused in that area until we get all the lead service lines replaced. Then we'll be moving over to Northside Douglas Westwood area. We'll actually be doing a project, starting the communication for that project in two thousand and twenty-one first quarter where we'll be out talking to the community, submitting funding applications and starting our detailed design. That project's going to encompass an area from Nichols Road all the way east to the river and then from about Kalamazoo Avenue, then all the way north of the township line. There will be over two thousand replacements in that project. One highlight in two thousand and twenty was that we hit our highest number yet of lead service replacements in any one year with five hundred and eighty-nine replacements. Next slide, please. I do also want to say that that map, we keep an interactive, real-time map available on the website. If you go to City Kalamazoo website and you look into lead or you can even just Google City Kalamazoo Lead, you can pull up that map and it'll show you year-by-year replacements. It'll show you that map and it's kept updated on a routine basis. I also want to spend some time talking about our overall lead program. You can call anytime three one one and be given information concerning where you live, whether or not you have a lead service pipe or suspected lead service pipe. Anybody can receive a free filter. We provide NSF certified filters that are certified to remove lead. Any property can be sampled, will come out and do a free lead sample. And if we, the results of that sample show elevated levels, we will prioritize a replacement at that address. That's in addition to the work we're doing, say, this year in Eastside or starting next year in the Northside area. So, even with those projects that we bid out and we've got scheduled, if we do a sample and we see an elevated level somewhere else within the community, we'll prioritize that and get that service replaced as well. I also want to share with you our results from this year. These are recent results. They have not been confirmed by Eagle yet. This is the data that we've sent to Eagle. We should know back here relatively soon. But this is just the last period in two thousand and twenty. And Kalamazoo is about four point eight parts per billion. Parchment is at one. And of course, just a reminder, the action level's at fifteen. In two thousand and twenty-five, the action level in the state of Michigan is going to drop to twelve. And of course, there's no safe level of lead. Our goal is to continually reduce these numbers. Our goal certainly is to continue to replace lead service lines. Our goal is to be responsive and there for our community because there is no safe level of lead. So, this isn't something where, you know, we're necessarily just trying to hit a target. We're trying to sit on top of this and follow this program through. Next slide, please. We saw some water main replacements in two thousand and twenty, some pretty big projects where we replaced water main on Cork Street and on Oakland Drive in coordination with major street projects. Those were projects that were coordinated through MDOT. We're going to continue along that plan and we'll be replacing water main in twenty-one on Parkview Avenue and Portage Street. It's really important for us to replace this water main in a project basis when we're focusing on kind of an asset management planner approach. In other words, we don't want to dig up the street more than what's necessary. So, if we're going to do a major street construction project, we take a look at what is the age of that water main that's under the street? What's the condition of it? What's the break history? And we're starting to see some trends in terms of old pipe that is a hundred years old or nearing a hundred years old. And really, the need to get that out of the street and replace it. When we look at the total inventory of water main, we've got well over a hundred miles of water main that is over a hundred years old today. It's important for us to get on a replacement schedule and start replacing this water main. Because as we project out, we look towards the year twenty thirty-seven, twenty thirty-five, in that timeframe, we're going to add three hundred more miles to that inventory in terms of water main that's a hundred years old or older. So, and not too far into the future, we're going to be looking at, you know, having upwards of four hundred to four hundred and fifty miles of water main that's well over a hundred years old. And it's important for us to start that work now and begin that schedule. Next slide, please. Talking about some transmission looping. So, what transmission looping is essentially is providing redundancy within that water main network. These are the larger diameter mains, twelve inches or larger, that help support those distribution mains. Those are like the six-inch and eight-inch lines that are out on many of the streets. You know, as we have water main breaks and as we're moving water around between different pressure districts, we really rely on these water transmission mains. And just as the name sounds, if you think of like a street network or something like that for transportation, these would be like the highways for water main. And it's really important for us to have redundancy within that network and the ability for us to move water around. This project that we have proposed to start here in two thousand and twenty-one will be connecting our Eastside High Pressure District to our High Pressure District. And what that will do is provide additional redundancy for source water as well as redundancy for firefighting and flow in terms of tankage. So, we'll be able to utilize sources from the north to help feed kind of the southern Kalamazoo city ring and vice versa, so that we'll be able to move water around as we have to take stations out of service as well as continuing to provide for increased redundancy. Next slide, please. We're also looking to increase storage capacity. There's some replacement of older facilities, tanks that were saved from nineteen thirty-nine, tanks that are, you know, upwards of seventy-five years old that are, we're looking to replace as well as also just add to that system. You know, our system is continuing to grow year after year and it's recommended that we have about twenty-five percent of our max daily demand in the air. So, some of our districts were quite deficient in that. You saw that we just put up a tower on the intersection of US one thirty-one and ninety-four. It's kind of across from BTR Park. That water tower serves a large coverage area in the City of Kalamazoo, Kalamazoo Township and Comsec Township. And also touches on a small portion of Oshmo Township. So, that helps us to increase water quality. We can kind of soften the demands of the system throughout the day, the starts and stops of the pump stations as they support the pressure. So, it provides overall smoothing effect to the system, which does help water quality as well. We'll be continuing our construction in Texas Township where we currently have a tank going up that's similar to the tank on one thirty-one. One point to note is that the tank on one thirty-one, that was actually awarded the Structural Project of the Year by Southwest Michigan American Society of Civil Engineers. So, that was quite a remarkable project and that tank just went online this summer. Next slide, please. Another major portion of our capital investment focus is on treatment station improvements. We're looking to make improvements at approximately fourteen of our sixteen stations, really focusing on optimizing corrosion control and iron sequestration. So, we currently have a corrosion control program in place right now. But we've been studying new methods, new chemicals since two thousand and seventeen. We've put some stations on that new chemical already and we're looking now to make major changes to all the stations and really optimize that feed system. So, when we say optimize that, we're really looking at utilizing online monitors, computer-controlled transitioning systems between, you know, if we pump more hydraulically at a station, we want to feed more chemicals as well. And, you know, throughout the day, as all those changes are happening, that's really important for, you know, a computer and advanced controls to take that on. That same system also provides iron sequestration. So, we're looking at optimize blend of phosphates using both orthophosphate and polyphosphate to get after an improved iron sequestration process as well as that corrosion control. So, there's work that's going to happen throughout twenty-one. There's been some projects awarded already. Project awards will continue through this year and construction next year. And that will be focused on continued water quality improvements with this program. Next slide, please. We're going to transition now and talk a little bit about some of the projects that we have going on in wastewater. Odor control has been a focus certainly for the public lately. And we've finishing up some projects that were awarded a few years ago. The odor control project focusing on the carbon scrubber units. We've got four of those units are in place. One of those units is operational. Now, we'll be working through the spring to bring the additional three units online. So, those are all operational. We're in the design iterations and design phases right now of a odor scrubber system focused on a biofilter. You know, essentially, what the system is going to do is pull the foul air or odorous air from the interceptor sewer network as it comes into the treatment plant. And these are some pretty large pipes, seventy-two inch pipes, fifty-four inch pipes. And they're all kind of coming to the treatment plant along Harrison just south of where the treatment plant is. And what that's going to do is pull a large volume of air between fifteen hundred and, excuse me, between fifteen thousand and twenty-one thousand cubic feet per minute. It's going to push that through a biofilter, which essentially is like a media bed, provides a beneficial growth for bacteria so that they can oxidize and break down some of those sulfur compounds. We're also looking at a carbon scrubber unit on there or polishing unit to help with VOCs and other foul air items. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. In 2021, we're going to be starting at, this will be a several year project, but we'll be starting. The rehabilitation of our tertiary treatment system. We'll also look at rehabilitating our, our. Secondary final settling tanks. The work in 21 is really going to be focused on procuring the filtering media. This picture right here is actually our existing tertiary treatment system. And all that water goes over those weirs. It then works its way down through sand bed, it's almost like a sand filter. This, this process has been in place since the early 80s and it's showing its age. We're starting to, to have, you know, challenges in terms of maintenance and operational ability. So we'll be moving to a similar process. But using a little bit different filter media. And that filter media will be procured in 21 and the work will continue on through 22. Next slide, please. This shows you kind of where we've been in terms of capital investment, the ramp up and where we're focused to go. So what really want to kind of stress and focus on is the. Incremental ramp up year after year after year in infrastructure investment. This infrastructure investment is needed because of age, because of condition. And because of, you know, treatment needs in, in terms of meeting expectations. Water quality is a chief concern of the public. And it is our concern to make sure that we're meeting those water quality. Criteria every day. So as you see the, the ramp up in investment. As we go to the out years, there is a smoothing effect. And I wanted to kind of bring up as we transition between planned CIP investment and then actual cash flow. So as you move out another few years, the, the spike between 21, 22 kind of smoothed out. And that's a natural smoothing that happens as projects take two to three years to build out. And those cash flow numbers smooth, but really the, the important takeaway from the slide. Is incremental and continued advancement in infrastructure. Really to focus on age and condition replacement. And a focus on water quality environmental protection. As we continue to take these very important infrastructure assets very seriously. And continue to invest in them to make sure that we're able to serve the public at the level of service that's required. Next slide, please. So a little bit of a breakdown showing what we've got in years to come, both in water and wastewater. Talking about water, we can really kind of focus in on the water stations themselves, the treatment plants. We're looking at, you know, continued investment to increase water quality. And reliability at those stations. Water infrastructure, things like lead service lines, water main replacements, cast iron main replacement. I talked about the need for cast iron main replacement and getting a program and sticking with it. Similar in what we're doing with lead service line replacements. We're on a committed 20 year program to replace all lead service lines in the city. And the cast iron main replacement is something that we also need to focus on. In wastewater treatment side of the house. Again, many improvements at the treatment plant itself. Now wastewater is a little bit different. We only have one wastewater plant, whereas in the water side, we've got now 16 treatment plants. Sanitary sewer main, rehabs, reconditioning, replacements, and then wastewater general. So again, you see a little bit more of a breakdown. But continued investment as we go year after year. Next slide, please. And with this, I'm going to pass the presentation over to Mr. Bart Foster. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Baker, and thank you Kalamazoo for the opportunity to, to address you tonight and kind of give you a brief summary of. Our proposed water and wastewater rates for the city for 2021. I think in your packages, you have other material that about a 60 page report. On the water rates and about half of that material on the wastewater rates. I'm, I'm going to try to hit on the highlights that's in all that material and certainly just questions. That are in the more detailed reports, I'd be glad to entertain those as well. What we really tried to do in our study was to put together a. A five year financial forecast for each of the utilities. Primarily driven to establish a responsible financing plan for the, the, the capital investment that James just went through. There's detailed calculations of cost of service allocations following industry standards and contractual requirements. And then there's a, an illustration of how we actually calculate the rates themselves. And then finally, on the, on the water report. There's a rather lengthy discussion of the history. Of the water service and the customer relationships in the Kalamazoo system. Which will become important as, as we get to some of these slides. So just as an introductory, I'm going to make this. Bear with me, excuse me, I'm going to try to make this go away. Thank you. The, the entirety of the operations and investment requirements. And the improvements of the utilities are funded by water rates and wastewater rates of the systems. There isn't any subsidization in Kalamazoo via taxes or any other external financing source. So really what we're talking about is the financing mechanism for the services that Director Baker outlined. Next. There's a emerging, and we've talked about this in prior years. There's been a lengthy conversation between the city and representatives of the townships. To develop a new water services agreement, which has a simplified process towards computing water rates. Thus the import of the history I mentioned a moment ago. And, and James mentioned a little bit of this when we showed the map. The, the city of Kalamazoo's water system, you basically serve everybody at the door to door. So you are a retail service provider for everybody in the city. And a retail service provider for all of the other customers out in the townships. There aren't any bulk sales that are then turned around in other water systems out there. It's a full service entity. It's fairly simply, fairly simple structure that way. You've got what's classified in the water agreement as city customers and township customers. The, the principles of the new agreement are to share benefits and simplify the process for water rates. And develop to equalize water rates and get to those equalized water rates in a manner that is. Hasn't created a lot of wild volatility in the adjustments in rates year over year. In the old rate methodology, there were certain aspects that would benefit city customers in terms of lower rates. And there were other aspects that went the other way and benefited township customers in lower rates. And you seem to see some volatility year over year, depending on where that benefit was. The new water agreement seeks to achieve regional cooperation by saying, hey, look, let's just have. Equalize rates for everybody, share the benefits and simplify the process. Next. So a year ago, the plan called for a series of water system rate increases of 14%. And wastewater increases of 10%. So when, when we addressed the commission in January of 2020. Those were the increases that were suggested for 2020 that the commission then adopted. And we indicated that there likely be a comparable amount coming in 2021. And that's what these proposals reflect is another 14% system wide on water. And about 10, and 10% on wastewater system. We, James mentioned the spike in the capital investment. Our plan is to put together a financial forecast that has similar but declining increases. In the remaining five years, the four, the four years of the five year forecast period. As we'll have at closing here, we have an illustration as to where Kalamazoo water and wastewater rates are right now. And where they are likely to remain low compared to peers in the state of Michigan and beyond. Next. We mentioned that this is summary, the water rates will remain below average. The effect of the typical residential customer in the city. Is about a $3 of this proposed rate increase is about $3.65 per month. A comparable customer in the township is about $2.05 per month. Now, this is based on the average reported usage of a city customer. And we, we wanted to use that same usage proxy, if you will. To illustrate the price differential in the city and township. The fact of the matter is, some of the township customers use quite a bit more water and have larger connection sizes. Than do city customers. So I'm not trying to indicate that the average township customer increase will only be $2 compared to the city's 365. I just, we're trying to put the usage on like, 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 like platforms for purposes of comparisons. Next slide, please. I mentioned how, not basic, but how pretty simplified and uniform the customer profile is on the water system. It is not that way on the wastewater system. When James put the map up, he indicated that, you know. Portage is just a small, more than a handful, but a small number of customers in portage to serve water by Kalamazoo. The entire city is served wastewater by Kalamazoo, but they are served as a bulk customer or a wholesale customer. They're one of the, they're the largest of the wholesale municipality customers. I believe there's seven of them. That, you know, they, they deal with their own businesses and residents for purposes of wastewater service. Do the local collection and deliver the wastewater at. At the interceptors and it's metered. And turn it over to Kalamazoo for the rest of the conveyance down to the treatment facilities and the treatment and disposal thereof. So there's, there's a, that's not a similar customer class on the water. There are similar customers in K Township and elsewhere that are served door to door, so to speak. That are retail customers outside the city as well as everybody inside the city. And then what really makes Kalamazoo, if not unique, at least. Well, I would, I would say unique are the, are the contract industries of Pfizer and graphics packaging that actually are served via a contract. And James mentioned that the wastewater facility has the pharmaceutical. Arrangement that it, that is really unique to Kalamazoo. And then in addition to those contract industries, there are. Seven to 10 additional industries that are monitored for the level of pollutants they provide to the system. And are billed directly in accordance to what they send, not just in a volumetric piece. But what constituency of wastewater they're sending for treatment to the KWRP. So it's a lot more complicated rate structure. And to the extent that we get into contract discussions on updating the wastewater contract. It's, that's something that needs to be taken into consideration as well. Next slide, please. Similar to water, the wastewater rates after these proposed adjustments will remain below the average of comparable peers. Couple of unique things here, well, one, the wastewater rates are governed. By rate settlement agreements that were negotiated to resolve litigation in the 1980s and in the 1990s. So there's a set of rules that we need to follow when setting wastewater rates. That are embodied into what is formerly known as the 1988 rate settlement agreement and the 1998 rate settlement agreement. One unique feature this year is as an offshoot or an implementation plan to those rate settlement agreements. The current rates contain the last year of a adjustment to the outside city customers, including Pfizer. To implement the results of a true up analysis for the four years from 2013 through 2016. That's going away with the 2022 rates and it creates some, that creates some. A bit of complexity in the impacts of the proposed rates on the outside city customers. With all that being said, the increase to a typical residential customer. In the city is about a dollar 24% a month. And that same sister customer, if you will, in the townships would be $2.27 per month. Next slide, please. We, the, I mentioned up at early on that the water rates report was roughly 60 pages. And the wastewater rate was only about half of that. We're proposing a rather simplified approach to the wastewater rates for 2021. And that is a uniform increase in every rate by 10%. We haven't gone through the same detailed cost of service analysis that we did for water. In order to implement the equalized rates notion for a number of reasons. And, and here's kind of the rationale behind that recommendation that led us, behind the decision that led us to that recommendation. Wastewater, as I mentioned earlier, the, the loadings from industrial customers are a really significant. Revenue impact on the wastewater system. Early in the mid part of 2020. There was a huge decline in what was being sent by Pfizer Graphic Packaging and some of the other major industries in Kalamazoo. Undoubtedly a reaction to the, to the onset of COVID. There's been a pretty material rebound towards the end of the year. But really that creates some uncertainty and how do we project future loadings from this? Very significant revenue source. It also creates a challenge when we try to figure out by the 1998 settlement agreement. We, the wastewater utility is instructed to true up the actual financial results. Against what was put in place when the rates were formulated. Well, there's a material decline in wastewater build units in 2020, which means there's a material client decline in revenues during 2020. And yet it's a largely fixed cost system. So once the financial results are finalized for 2020. I anticipate that there may be a significant amount of money owed to the system from customers. That creates uncertainty on exact, a potential volatility on what we could do for wastewater rates for 2021. There are, Western Michigan, the entire state of Michigan has undergone some. Uniquely wet weather periods, as I'm sure you're all aware, over the last couple of, three or four years. And as a result, there's been some wildly varying levels of infiltration and inflow into the system. Infiltration and inflow is basically wastewater that gets to the plant. That really you can't identify the source of. It, it doesn't, it's leaking into the pipes, it may be coming in from the river. There are other unknown sources, but you can't put your finger on, hey, did this come from, you know, businesses in Kalamazoo? Or did it come from a bulk meter in portage or what have you? How we deal with that in the rates is pretty important. It could create an increase for someone and a decrease for someone else. We believe it's, it's important to understand. And evaluate what the fairest way to deal with that in the future. The uncertainty of the irregularity in the pollutant loadings from Pfizer and others has. Director Baker has suggested, and I, I agree with him, that it'd be a good idea to evaluate. How are we measuring these loadings that are coming in from industries? And how do we assign pollutant responsibility to not just the industries? But to the domestic customers that, that are, you know, just basically sending sanitary volumes to the wastewater facility. Finally, there are, there's an expectation that the, once the water contract is finalized. Which is about there, that there'll be ongoing conversations on potentially doing a new wastewater contract. And that may have things that impact rates as well. And, and then really finally, the 1998 rate settlement agreement instructs the city to update wastewater rates via a quote rate study. At least every two years. We, the city did so in 2020. Is not required by rate settlement agreement to do so in 2021. With, with all this in front of us, we believe it's prudent to, in, in the name of stability. And managing uncertainty to simply increase the wastewater rates uniformly across the board by 10%. So that that was the basis behind our, our recommendations on the wastewater rates. Next slide. This is kind of the capstone. This shows combined water and wastewater. So if we prepare the slides correctly, the, those increases that you're seeing for the, per month for the city and the township ought to be the, the sum of the water. Plus the wastewater figures from a few slides back. The blue shaded bars at the far left end are, is Kalamazoo city rates, Kalamazoo inside city rates. The blue shaded bars at the far left end are, is Kalamazoo city rates, Kalamazoo inside city rates. And the dark blue is the current rate. And this is for a typical residential bill using, oh, it's fifty one point three cubic meters per month, which I should be able to do that math in my head. It works out to be about forty seven, one hundred and fifty gallons per month. So that's for, or for quarter, excuse me, per quarter. And the, the inside city rates are, as you see, will go up from the dark blue to the light blue, but will still be the lowest of any of the cities that we surveyed in the last week of December and the first week of January. All these other communities on here, we researched and calculated from published utility rates that were currently in effect. Now, many of these other cities, I promise you, I know some of them and what they're doing with rates, but they haven't proposed anything yet that's been published. So we're comparing the proposed Kalamazoo and Kalamazoo outside city rates with the current rates for everybody else. Obviously, the message here is that the inside city rates for Kalamazoo would stay the lowest in the state of comparably sized or comparable utilities that we were able to survey. And even the outside city rates at the somewhat higher levels would be well below the average. Next slide, please. So with that, I'll, I'll end my comments and be available for questions later and ask Director Baker to, to take over.
Thank you, sir. We want to talk a little bit about uncertainty in the utility funds as we look out to reject future revenue requirements. You know, essentially the information that you have before you, really what I'm talking about are those cap, capital investment slides showing out year capital investment dollars. And the information is, you know, essentially based on the capital improvement program that we put in place with the budget, it's part of the budget document, and a lot of that work was done in July. The utility accounts are, you know, constantly in flux, constantly changing and responding to, you know, everyday items that we're involved with every day, such as water main breaks, to, you know, bigger picture items, such as, you know, station consolidation and, and future plans. As things evolve and change, they have impacts for the capital program as well. And so some things that, you know, what I'd like to focus on in terms of a discussion is that, you know, as, you know, regulatory hurdles are presented for us as well as the community demand for increased water quality, our methods may need to change as we look at certain approaches to station treatment and consolidation. Two examples, which are not in our CIP plan right now, more study is needed on them are our stations number seventeen and eighteen. We have essentially idled those stations and taken them offline. A few years, a few years ago, I believe it was in two thousand nineteen, we are actually now moving forward with decommissioning those stations. So that hydraulic capacity is gonna have to be recovered in some way or another. That could mean treatment at those sites or consolidation and making other sites larger. We are launching a study this year to really look at the future of our decentralized approach. Is that the right approach? Should we be looking at consolidated stations and have, you know, a few more larger stations like Central, for example, and a few less of the smaller stations like your seventeens and eighteens? We also talked about a lot of changes that happened in twenty twenty, you know, throughout the year. We saw some industries decline and we saw costs shift into some other areas. Those are some examples of some unknown unknowns that can have material impacts for utility rates. And, you know, we continue to have an aging system. We had a few water main breaks that were quite remarkable this last year. This photo here is a, putting everything back together with new pipe on Crosstown. That was a project that we did not begin the year with plans to do that. A few years ago, we had a, a pretty catastrophic water main break at an intersection underneath the railroad tracks. That was a little bit more involved than your typical water main break, and it was quite expensive as well. And so, you know, with that, we want to kind of provide some understanding that while we, you know, essentially are showing you revenue requirements in out years that are a component of the increased capital, there are things that happen year to year that might constrain our ability to come back within a year and hit a target precisely. And so that might move around a little bit. And I think that information presented concerning wastewater certainly provides some, some depth of how complicated some of those structures might be in terms of financing and presenting cost and revenue requirements. Next slide, please. I want to talk a little bit now about some of the programs that we have in place and are going to be putting in place for twenty twenty one. One of the things to talk about right up front is no more water shut offs, we're going to continue that process through twenty one. City Kalamazoo was ahead of the governor's order back in March of twenty twenty when across the state of Michigan, shut offs were ceased. The city was, was ahead of that and announced that program really to kind of help families deal with the pandemic and not have to worry about the drinking water. We're going to continue that program through twenty twenty one. So there'll be no shut offs due to account delinquency. Certainly if somebody needs their water shut off and requests that for, you know, plumbing or whatever other reason, now, you know, we can, we can provide that service for them, but delinquent based shut offs will, will not be occurring. That does present some challenges within the accounting department, within management services, Mr. Vazinci and his staff. We don't have all those details figured out yet. We'd like to work on that through twenty one and bring something back to the city commission at some point. There could be some cash flow challenges in terms of, there might be a gap in, in the funds that we're collecting and we might need to have some more money in the bank to cover ourselves, so to speak. And, and there, there could be rate implications for that. We, we don't know all the details, we're gonna have to work through that. Another program that we're going to be rolling out in twenty one is a partnership with Consumers Energy that is a helping neighbors program. Really, the goal there is to provide residents with methods to save water and, and achieve sustainable usage. You know, many of our customers that are facing challenges with utility bills are also seeing increased usage due to aging plumbing, inefficient fixtures and leaks. And with this program, we'll provide customers an opportunity to resolve those items. We'll be sending out information packets to all our service addresses here within the next couple of months. It's gonna connect customers with the ability to sign up for the program. It's available to all customers, but there are income criteria in, in terms of what benefits a customer may receive. So, you know, folks that are at the, the higher income ends, they can still participate in the program. But, you know, the, the benefits that they receive may, may be limited. On the lower income side of the program, the program will include an interior home inspection that you can schedule. There's also opportunities to do that virtual. So you can, you know, with your phone or mobile device, participate in a virtual home inspection. We'll identify areas where there's inefficiencies or where plumbing repairs are needed. And a program will connect those folks with resources to make those repairs and get that work completed. We're also continue our smart meter program. We were awarded the twenty twenty Smart Cities Award for the pilot program that we have in place. And our program where, you know, we're, we're essentially doing that through, you know, replacement of old meters. We'll go back through right now, it's not a program to replace large functions of meters, that's in a few years. But with a smart meter, we've got some better opportunities to identify customer usage patterns, we can notify customers if we see usage go way up. And so, you know, overall, there's, there's a better program with that. Next slide, please. And so with that, I'll be turning it back over to Deputy City Manager Jeff Chamberlain, and I'm available for any questions any commissioners may have.
All right, thank you, Director Baker. So where we are with the rates, the adoption of the rates is actually an adoption of an ordinance that we do every year. And as an ordinance, it requires a first reading and then at a second meeting, the, the final adoption. So at our seven o'clock business meeting, the city commission will have the proposed rate ordinances for water and wastewater for first reading. There's no action on them tonight. And then the schedule would be to bring them back to your regular meeting on Monday, February fifteenth for final action. So again, I want to thank Director Baker and Mr. Foster very much for a lot of information tonight. And then we're very happy to answer any questions that you might have or any general comments. So I'll turn it back to the mayor, thank you.
Thank you, Jim Chamberlain. Commissioners, any questions for Director Baker or Bart Foster this evening on that presentation? All right, I don't see anybody right off the bat, I appreciate that. I missed, I'm sorry, Commissioner. Anything?
No.
You're pointing somewhere, Commissioner Prado, all right.
Sorry. I think we all show up differently, like Brady Bunch style, so I don't know that it. Thank you, Director Baker and Mr. Foster for the presentation. You were, you were mentioning, you know, as an enterprise, that utility bills pay for operation, maintenance and improvements. And, you know, I think one of the difficulties about the work that, that you do and the, the work that you report on is that largely what the customers see is the operations end of things, right? So what's coming out of their faucet this moment, tomorrow? Tomorrow when they take a shower, tonight when they brush their teeth? And so, you know, what, what, you, you've shown a lot of improvements and whatnot, but why do you think, in, in your case, why do you think it's so important that we're making these capital improvements now? You know, and, and being aggressive with these capital improvements now? You know, because a lot of this investment is, is based on the maintenance and improvement end of things that maybe people don't see. You know, I think it's, it's easy for us as consumers to, you know, want to see what we're paying for. And I think one of the challenges about the, the maintenance and improvement end of, of things that you've outlined is that, you know, it's not like going to a restaurant where you pay more, you think you're gonna get more on your plate. You know, in some cases, sometimes it's the invisible improvements that make, you know, our lives better and safer and healthier. So do you mind just kind of talking about that and making the case for why, you know, these capital improvements are so important now?
Yeah, certainly, thank you, Commissioner Prado. We can understand that, you know, in terms of, there's a lot behind the curtain, so to speak, and in this case, it's underground that folks are not necessarily aware of or they don't see in their daily interactions. But I want to stress the critical importance of, you know, delivering clean, safe drinking water every day. Because when it comes out of the tap wrong, or it doesn't come out of the tap at all, it's too late. And it takes years quite often in design, then years in construction and implementation to get these systems to the point where they're reliable and that we're replacing them in due time. So in, in some respect, if, if we waited for that failure to occur to where, you know, we didn't do work until it didn't come out of the, the tap or it, it didn't go down the drainage fixture, we would be most certainly be, behind the eight ball. And as a system of our age, our water system dates back to eighteen sixty nine and our sewer system dates back to eighteen eighty one. A lot of that stuff is still in the ground. A lot of our, our pump stations and drinking water infrastructure is from the nineteen fifties, nineteen sixties, nineteen eighties. And these systems have been around for a long time. I mentioned a hundred year old water main, we're talking about the lead service lines. That's a lot of work out there, that's a lot of work to do. And our staff, we're dedicated to deliver clean, safe drinking water every day. We're out there working on it, but it, it takes a long time to replace a hundred miles of main. It takes a long time to replace ten thousand lead services. So these are programs where, you know, they're essentially twenty year programs. And, you know, it takes a long time to, to switch all the stations over to optimize corrosion control. But we're committed to the work, we're at, doing the work day in and day out, really with the goal that your tap is gonna continue to flow and that you as a resident will not be, you know, inconvenienced or inconvenienced last by the work we're doing. Thank you.
Yeah, I was gonna ask you as well, so you mentioned in two thousand twenty, it was the highest year of lead service removal, so you had those five hundred and eighty nine households that were, their units were changed in twenty twenty. Do you forecast, like, do you have a, a, a range of forecast of how many that you do each year? Or is it just kind of dependent on, you know, weather and, and whatever that could impact how many you do? I was just curious, because I was, you, you made it sound like maybe in twenty twenty, you were able to do more than you anticipated. So I just was curious if, if that's possible in a certain year where you might be able to accomplish more than you set out to do if, if conditions are right.
Yeah, great question. So based on our inventories or our, our numbers that we had in two thousand seventeen, when we rolled the program out, we identified five hundred replacements per year that would be required to achieve system wide replacement within twenty years. As we continue to work and progress and learn more about the system, we move through neighborhoods and, and identify, you know, what the, the service materials are street by street. We're constantly updating our inventories. So those material service inventories, that's a required submittal now to Eagle. And we're constantly retooling or reaveraging that number in terms of what do we have to hit for an annual number to, to hit replacement? So from two thousand seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, all the way through twenty, this program essentially has been the city's goal and the city's determination. Twenty twenty one, this now becomes state law. So we are now under state law to hit whatever that number is. It's still around five hundred replacements per year to hit that twenty year goal. Our increased number this year, five eighty nine, you know, we'd like to see a, a number higher than that next year. A lot of that comes back to our project planning and how we're rolling projects out. We're seeing that we can be more competitive with bids if we bid out larger projects. We actually during this award for the East Side Kalamazoo project, we, you know, saw some interest in, in some bidders that weren't necessarily from this area. And in addition to attracting more contractors to, to bid on projects, when we group projects in, in large bundles and large areas, we're also see some, you know, significant awards from state of Michigan that East Side Project received over one point seven million dollars from the state of Michigan for lead service replacements. So through the project planning methods, you know, identifying larger project areas, getting those projects submitted for state funding applications, all kind of comes together to give us some more, you know, efficiency and optimization in terms of project deliverables and, and project execution. So we're continuing to learn from that and we're gonna continue to focus on those delivery methods with the goal of hitting higher numbers in twenty one and in twenty two as well. So hopefully this becomes a kind of reoccurring theme for us to announce high numbers in, in terms of replacement year after year.
And just had one more question for you. This is just the, the nerd in me that I enjoy hearing that you explain this every single year. And, and so pardon me for asking this again this year, but you always talk about this story about how, you know, we're trying to transition from the cast iron water mains to, what is it called, ductile iron? Uh, and that basically like anything pre nineteen sixty-five or anything that's been installed post nineteen sixty-five, I think, if I, I'm not mistaken.
Pre nineteen sixty-four.
Sixty-four, okay. And so can you just explain to people how that works? And so when people see, uh, you know, water, uh, when they see, um. Uh, water main breaks in the winter, you know, going on, explaining why these upgrades to this ductile is going to be much better so that we don't. In the future decades, we don't see as many people, uh, having their, their roadways and sidewalks dug up.
Yeah, certainly. Uh, and I'll try to simplify my answer here to keep it somewhat short. Um, but essentially cast iron main, um, you know, that there's an older metallurgical process that went into that. Uh, that water main is very brittle and as it ages and corrodes, it becomes even more brittle. Uh, that water main cannot resist the forces in the ground, uh, when we go through the freeze thaw cycles. And when we go into, you know, freezing conditions, the ground actually moves, moves. Uh, the cast iron, uh, main just can't support, uh, those stresses. It does not, uh, withstand beam. Stress like ductile iron pipe does. Uh, ductile iron pipe is a more advanced metallurgical process. Um, the city, uh, starting nineteen sixty-four, um, installed all ductile iron pipe and we have ever since then. Uh, ductile iron pipe has ability to move thus the name ductile. Um, it actually can move with the ground forces much better than the cast iron pipe can. Um, it also has, uh, beam strength and it can withstand, um, the stresses in the ground much better. Um, than the cast iron pipe can. Uh, it's also a little bit more resistant to corrosion forces. Um, and to my knowledge, uh, and we check the data every year, uh, we have not had a. Main break on our ductile iron class water main. Uh, we've had a lot of responses out in those areas. Uh, from hydrants, that's one of the favorite things, uh, that errant vehicles like to do in the wintertime. As, uh, smash into a hydrant and break it. And, uh, sometimes if those collisions are severe enough. Uh, they can actually upset the water main and then, uh, we've got to go shut down a whole area and, and get, uh. Involved with a, a pretty large scale replacement. Um, but to my knowledge, um, we have not had a main break. On the ductile iron class of water main.
Other questions for Director Baker? All right. Th- thanks for, thanks for your help. So, uh, we're gonna be experiencing, uh, one of the things here in terms of time constraints. Uh, when we have these community hall meetings before our regular meeting, I'm wanting to have a, a period of time. Uh, you know, to do what we need to do before we settle down for our business meeting at seven. So I know we will be having a. We won't extend this too close, uh, to our seven o'clock meeting, uh, hopefully to be humane to everyone watching and. Those of us participating directly. I do have a few questions, Director Baker, and I think these can be fairly short answer questions, but. I just want to run through a few of them for you. Uh, first one, can, can we make a small profit on our water system? And then use that money to support other things in Kalamazoo?
So no, we, we are pretty limited in terms of what, what we can do financially. Uh, the water and wastewater departments are what's called enterprise departments. Um, and that they're limited in terms of those funds can only be spent. Within the water and sewer, water and wastewater fund. So, um, we can't, for example. Uh, take water funds and, and buy a fire truck with that, uh, that, that would not be. Uh, allowed or authorized under, uh, the, the laws, rules and regulations that govern. Uh, the enterprise accounts for water and sewer.
Okay. Uh, about, and I, I, I'm sort of catching you by surprise with some of these, so I, we'll see if you have these answers off the top of your head, but. Uh, do you know how many, approximately how many, uh? Folks are on your water and wastewater team at Public Services altogether?
Yeah, we have, in terms of the, the entire staff department, we've got about. Two hundred and twenty allocations. Now there, there are about forty allocations, uh, that comprise our. Uh, Streets Department or, or Public Works Department. Uh, so if you, you took the difference between those, you'd have about, uh. Uh, hundred and eighty individuals that are, uh, really focused on water and wastewater. Um, and essentially in Kalamazoo, we are a Public Works Department and a Public Utilities Department. And a Public Utilities and a Public Works Department is a Public Services Department. Um, that being said. Uh, we're a larger group on the utility side, public utility side, um, because we are. A countywide department in that respect. The Kalamazoo Public Works. Port- portion of Public Services is limited to. Just city count, or four, only forty folks, uh, in those allocations.
Okay, so about a hundred and eighty or so on though. Public, uh, and what we're talking about tonight, right? Water and wastewater?
Correct.
Right. So, uh, and I don't know if you'll know this or not, but. Do you know approximately what percentage of your budget in essence is payroll? I know we talked a lot about tonight about. You know, we have to borrow money to make capital investments, so we certainly have, uh, bonds to pay back. But overall, you know, what percentage of your operating budget is payroll?
Uh, you know, I don't have a exact breakdown and I will tell you that the, the funds are, are somewhat different as you look at each one of those. Um, in the water department, um, a major, uh, portion of the revenue requirement is, uh. Due to projects or that's, that's bond, uh, dollars, you know, so essentially our debt service that we have to pay for. Uh, to, to satisfy those bond requirements. Um, in wastewater, uh, there is a much higher percentage of. What we call the opex side of it, our operation side of it. Um, but generally in the utility funds. Um, you know, our, our big cost drivers are, uh, personnel, uh, debt service is a big driver. Uh, chemicals, electricity are, are big drivers as well. Um, you know, I could bring, uh, Mr. Foster into the conversation here and, uh, he could potentially give us. Uh, a little bit more breakdown on, um, you know, percent of, you know, staffing costs and water and wastewater.
Uh, uh, thanks, James. Actually, I was just, uh, doing some quick, uh, some quick looking, um, and. Going by the, the figures in the rate reports of the, uh, twenty-three million dollars of water revenue. Um, for the annual revenue, paying for everything, operating expenses, debt service, capital, um, you know, the out-of-pocket capital. Out of that twenty-three million dollars, approximately five is personnel. And the figures for wastewater are twenty-seven million dollars of total revenue and approximately seven is personnel.
Okay, interesting. So the largest, largest drivers are debt service and, uh.
Okay, chemicals, utilities, um, uh, on the, on the operating side. Um, as well as contractual services to, to provide, uh, assistance there. Uh, and then, um, but the water, the debt service is a growing part. Uh, of the water overall revenue piece and, um, a slower growing part of the wastewater over, overall revenue piece.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Foster. Appreciate that. Um. Mr. Baker, just, just a, a quick little summary here, but across the range of people on your team. You know, what kind of training and skills, uh, does a person need if you want to be part of? You know, this important work in a community?
Uh, you know, pretty much, we're looking for folks that have, uh, the heart commitment to serve. You know, City Kalamazoo and the, the surrounding area. Um, it, it is beneficial to have. Uh, I would say a, a high school level of, uh, you know, education and be able to, to apply that educate, education. Uh, but our programs really are, um, you know, uh, training programs. Um, they're, uh, apprenticeship programs where, um, you know, you can come in at, at twenty-one years of age. Uh, have the, the basic skills to, uh, be able, um, pass a, a CBL test if we put you through the school. Um, and the ability to, uh, continue on and, and pass the state exams. Uh, we do require that, uh, you pass a minimum level state exams, um, then you can be part of our team and we're always looking for. Uh, folks that are eager and willing to, to join on and, and be part of that public services team. So, you know, for the most part. Uh, just a heart willing to serve and, uh, the ability to, to train, we'd be happy to have you.
Thank you. Art, do you hire on a regular basis?
Yes, yes. We're, we're not quite as, as structured as public safety in terms of hiring classes. Um, but we're routinely hiring, you know, groups of three to seven, sometimes ten. Um, with a staff of two hundred and twenty people. If you look at, uh, folks that are retiring, folks that are laterally moving within the department. Um, advancing promotions, things like that. Um, we're, we're constantly, uh, moving on it. Um, I, I can't remember what year it was, uh, might've been eighteen, maybe it was nineteen, uh, but just taking a look at the end of the year. Uh, we had hired over fifty people and we did not have any increase in allocation. So we weren't upsizing. You know, we were just going through, you know, essentially what we'd call hiring through attrition. Uh, folks are, are coming and going and we're hiring new folks in. Um, that wasn't all at once. Uh, that was, like I said, three, five, seven, ten, um, you know, over and over again, a couple of times through the year. Um, and then as you look back at the end of the year, uh, we had hired, uh, nearly fifty people.
Appreciate that. So obviously you, you have engineers on staff, so there's education that's required for that. But outside of that, then you're saying that someone with a high school degree can come in and actually. Uh, you know, bringing, you know, an, an attitude of, uh, you know, wanting the city to succeed. Can come in and get a good job with benefits, uh, and move up and become a, an expert in essence on. On the things like water systems and excavation and heavy construction and that sort of thing.
That's correct. And, you know, GED as well, um, you can make it through, uh, most of the, uh. First level, uh, state exams with, with a GED and, uh, we'd be happy to have folks with GEDs as well. So. Uh, having the high school diploma is not, uh, a hurdle, uh, so to speak. Um, so we'll, we'll take the equivalency as well and, uh, you know, you could do great in the department, uh, with a GED.
Appreciate that very much. So thanks for all of your work, your very detailed discussion tonight. Uh, you know, I will, you know, reveal to everyone that, you know, I am a bit of an infrastructure nerd. It is something that is, I'm. Uh, pretty excited about actually, and I, I know that that perhaps is a small group of people, but. Uh, I'm, uh, back in my earlier construction days, I used to install drain fields. Uh, Director Baker, septic tanks and, uh, trench style drain field, spent a lot of time, uh, down in ditches and digging and laying tile out. And, uh. You know, I would suggest, and I, and I don't think there's any argument against this, that the most important. Uh, you know, contribution that we have made, uh, to health and safety of civilization writ large. Is having clean water and a way to treat our waste. And I think that has contributed more to health and safety of civilization and it's a. Uh, you know, at the root of it, you know, it's a simple and relatively basic thing, but a critically important thing. So. Uh, it's something we don't talk about a lot, something we've just come to completely expect, even though there's. Billions of people in the world who do not have this benefit. And, uh, the only time I think unfortunately we recognize the absolute need of it. Is when we see very, very unfortunate, uh. And, and dangerous oversights made, where we're talking about Flint here in Michigan. Or dealing with, uh, PFAS and that sort of thing. Otherwise, we just take it for granted. So. I just want to say tonight, I do not take your work for granted. I really appreciate that you're looking for the future. And knowing that we have to invest now, I think that's something back in some days when money was a little tighter, you know, ten years ago. I think we've been doing some underinvestment over time, so maybe there's a little bit in catch-up mode. But you know, to do the things we need to do, have to do, like replacing lead service, uh, you know, service a- as well. Uh, so, so important. So thank you for your work. We don't take you for granted. Uh, DCM Chamberlain, is there other things for the agenda for the community of the hall?
No, but I just want to turn it back over to the city manager, Ritma.
Hey. Thanks, Jeff. Um, I wanted to take a moment to provide a quick update on a topic that I know is on. Top of mind for many in our community, and that is the, uh, actions being taken by the city of Kalamazoo to address the growing homeless encampments in our city. Uh, for starters, I want to be very clear that the city administration, along with Mayor Anderson in, in his daytime job. Are working diligently with our partners at the county and the Kalamazoo County Continuum of Care. To identify and provide viable housing alternatives for residents, for these residents. We are looking for alternatives, including motels, public land and public private partnerships. Over the last several months, city staff has worked with the county staff, local service providers, public health officials. Uh, to develop and implement the following responsive strategies. As of December twenty twenty, an additional temporary day shelter operated by Integrated Services of Kalamazoo, ISK, has been opened. At the River Church to ensure safe and ample space for anyone seeking respite. This site is open Monday through Friday and lunch is provided. Uh, the city of Kalamazoo has worked to improve conditions at two large encampment sites through the coordination of weekly trash service. Provision of ground cover materials and periodic cleanups. And the continuum of care with the support from the city and the Foundation for Excellence. Provided funding for Lantern House, a new program operated by Integrative. Services of Kalamazoo that provides low barrier housing for up to twelve individuals at a time. So the city of Kalamazoo, Foundation for Excellence, an additional local foundation supported. Uh, also supported the purchase of the Knights Inn motel site by the Lift Foundation to be used for temporary winter shelter for those currently in. Encampments. And ending homelessness in our community will take many hands. That's why we are calling on our partners at the county and across our community. To help us devise a suitable plan that allows these vulnerable people in our community to live in an environment that's safe and warm. So I just wanted to, uh, put that out there that we are working on it. Uh, there is, uh. Uh, partnerships that are, uh, have been in place for quite a while, especially the continuum of care which. Uh, last year or the year before was moved from the local initiative support corporation, Lisk, to, uh, to the United Way. So we. Appreciate United Way's efforts in all of this too. I have Laura Lamb, DCM Laura Lamb and, uh. Chief Coakley available if there are any questions.
Questions, Commissioners?
Vice Mayor Griffin? Um, I don't have any questions. Um, I just wanted to say thank you, um, to everyone. All the people on the ground who have been trying to do everything they can, um, to reach out into all the coordinated efforts. Um, and so just, I just wanted to share my thoughts for the community. Um, I was happy that. There was not, there was a decision made not to, um, disrupt or, um. Move the encampments from where they are. Um, as we know, we knew it was going to be cold and we know it's going to be cold every year. Um, and while there are efforts happening, um, such as the Knights Inn and other, um. Other projects, um, to really create affordable housing that's accessible to everyone. Um, just making sure that we're looking for more permanent efforts and, and thank you for reaching out, whether it be our city government or. Reaching across to the county government. We need more permanent efforts. We need something more permanent in place. For all levels of people in housing and that includes people who choose to or may want to stay outdoors as well. So. Making sure that we have that on our priority list. Thank you.
Other comments or questions for City Manager Ritma on this topic? Commissioner Cunningham?
Uh, I didn't have any questions. Uh, thank you for, um, thank you, Mayor, for acknowledging me and, and thank you, City Manager, for. Uh, giving us that update. I just wanted to highlight, um, that our, um. You know, the great work that our city is actually doing, because oftentimes we, uh, hear about the, the bad and don't hear about the good. Um, but we recently had an issue where, uh, a building was, uh, occupied unlawfully. Um, and I'm not sure what took place, but, um, I know that it was deescalated without much. Much that many issues. Um, so one, I appreciate, uh, the ability to accomplish that. Two, I just wanted to highlight that the, um. That the actual building that was occupied is looking to be good, looking. Might be actually occupied by an organization and rooted, um, for which I am very close to the family. Who is, uh, who administers that organization. So, um, I'm excited to hear that. Um, I'm excited to hear a lot of the initiatives we have moving forward that, uh, some of which Vice Mayor mentioned. Uh, as I think some of these things are the right type of ingenuity that we need in order to, kind of overcome some of these issues that we're dealing with as a community as a whole.
Appreciate it, Commissioner Cunningham. Any other thoughts, questions or comments? So seen none. Anything else, Manager Ritzma?
Not me, Your Honor.
Okay. Well, then, I believe we've covered our committee of the whole agenda. Uh, our business meeting starts at seven, so in about a half an hour. And, uh, how, how is that agenda available to people, DCM Chamberlain, if they want to take a look at it?
Absolutely, sir. Uh, if anybody goes to our website, uh, kalamazoo city dot org, at the very top of it, there's a, a meeting notices tab, and you can download the agenda for tonight's meeting and the entire packet, if people are interested in that.
And will people have an opportunity for public comment again at our business meeting later on?
Yes, our seven o'clock meeting is, is a regular business meeting. So we will be taking public comment, uh, and like we do normally. And those public com- that public comment period will, uh, again, be near the beginning part of the meeting prior to your, uh, consent agenda portion.
I, I believe you begin, you accept, would even accept comments before the meeting starts. Is that correct?
Yes, actually, we're, uh, because we do it on a recording system, we're accepting public comments right now for the seven o'clock meeting.
Okay, thank you so much. Appreciate the information. Good to see everybody and we'll see you in a little while. We are adjourned.